Okay, the light's red, now we go. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday of November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five zoning board meeting of appeals. Could we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to their republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
All right, Heather, you want to start the agenda, and we'll follow.
Sure. So, appeal number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three-two Bayview at Pecanic LLC, forty-seven Bayside Avenue, Jamesport. The applicant's attorney has requested an adjournment to December eleventh of two thousand and twenty-five. So again, they requested an adjournment from tonight's meeting to December eleventh of two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, move then second. Move then second, and Mr. Portia.
The first appeal, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three-two, the applicant's requested an adjournment due to an illness, so it's Bayview at Pecanic LLC, forty-seven Bayside Avenue, as previously stated. All right, so are we good?
We're good there, sir? Good. Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mrs. Sweski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Gazillo's vote aye.
Okay, and I vote aye, so that has been adjourned. Go ahead, Heather.
Okay, and then the next appeal on the agenda, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero two eight, five zero five Lincoln Street Opportunity Zone Fund LLC, five zero five Lincoln Street Riverhead, and two fourteen Marcy Avenue Riverhead. The attorney for the application has requested a lengthy adjournment to January twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-six. That's Kim Judd, and then Mr. Cuddy, who's the attorney for one of the other property owners, has agreed to this adjournment.
Can I have a?
Don't move, don't move. Second.
Move then second, Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mrs. Sweski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we've adjourned those? Go ahead, Heather.
Before we move on to the next item, sir, were you seeking to be heard on the first appeal?
That's the last one, so we'll announce it when we get to it.
They'll leave you.
Moving right along, our first appeal of the night will be appeal number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three-four, Roy Sokolowski, fifteen Surfway North, Calverton. Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred dash forty point two dash one dash forty-two, residents A forty zoning for a proposed addition to dwelling. Applicant requests variances and or relief from town code chapter three zero one dash eleven, where proposed front yard setback is nine point six feet, minimum required is fifty feet, where proposed side yard setback is two point eight feet, minimum required is twenty-five feet, where proposed combined side yard setback is eleven point two feet, minimum required is fifty-five feet, where proposed rear yard setback is one point four feet, minimum required is sixty feet, and where proposed impervious surface coverage is forty-six point five percent, maximum allowed is fifteen percent. And if there's anyone here for the application?
Who's representing?
Mr. Roy.
Are you attorney, sir?
No, I am the applicant and architect for the project.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, Roy Sokolowski. My permanent address is four hundred Briarwood Lane, North Vale, New Jersey. For this application, the address is fifteen Surfway North, Bating Hollow. Thank you.
Also known as C eleven?
Yes, C eleven in Wood Cliff Park, right.
Have you changed those numbers anymore?
No, well, it's still.
It's very confusing up there.
I know it is, I know.
But it's okay.
Yeah.
We get it, it's been around a long time.
Yeah, okay. Well, if I can give you a brief introduction, also, some of you may recognize me, I'm also chairman of the Town of Riverhead's Architectural Review Board, which I've been doing for probably over thirty-five years. This is Wood Cliff Park, which was started in nineteen fifty. My entire life has had summers spent in Wood Cliff Park, so it is now seventy-five years old. As you may be aware, that community started, has a bungalow community, and predates all zoning for that area. And then it was subdivided, I think, for tax purposes sometime in the sixties, and then zoning came in. But nothing in that community of two hundred bungalows can possibly meet the current zoning. So every lot is undersized, every lot has excess coverage, and I'm one of them. And the intent of this project is, it's a one-story bungalow, summer bungalow, only used in the summertime. It's two bedrooms with only a half bath currently. In order to take a shower, we have to go outside to a shed on the back of the property to take a shower. That was great when I was thirty years old. I'm married, my wife is somewhat handicapped, and it's become difficult, so I'm hoping to put in a new full bathroom indoors. But by doing that, I'm losing a bedroom, so now I need to add a bedroom to one side of the area. I actually do have extra unused outdoor space, but in order to do this, as you can see, all of my setbacks will not be current code, and my lot coverage will not meet current code, so I'm appealing based on a pre-existing use where none of the other areas meet code as well.
Roy, can I ask you a question? On the lots up there?
Yes.
They described, when you have a leasehold agreement, correct?
Correct.
And you only lease the structure itself, or is there a parcel that's leased out to you?
No, we lease the parcel.
So that area is assigned to you?
I own the structure as personal property, but we lease, we have a ninety-nine-year lease, and I lease the parcel, which is more or less the same as what shows on the tax map. But that was all created after these bungalows were built, and as a matter of fact, when I researched it and looked at the tax map, I found out that my neighbor's house behind me is actually partially on my property, so there's no.
If it is your property.
Yeah, there's no way you can straighten this out.
There's not enough consistency up there for me ever to try to make sense of what happened up there.
Right, yeah.
I mean, to me, I would just enforce the fire codes for separation.
Right.
There's no sense in even describing the property.
Correct, yeah.
In my eyes.
Yeah.
But you have a lot, is it a recognized lot by the Town of Riverhead?
Yes.
It is, because it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Right.
But it's not a lot to be conveyed. It's a lot that can be leased.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't sell the lot, no.
So, when we were discussing each case, just out of reference, we saw that you have a proposed addition with the octagon piece, but towards the back, is that part, is that an impact going to be what? What's that room going to be?
That's a new bedroom, because I lost.
The whole thing's a new bedroom?
Well, I lost a bedroom because of where I have to put a bathroom in there, so that's replacing an existing bedroom.
So, do you have the construction plans with you?
Yes, I do.
May we take a look at them?
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate that.
Do you want me to see if Justin could put them up on the screen?
I would like that.
Yeah.
If we could see them on the screen, that'd be great.
Yeah, you have it on there, right? Or you want?
Yeah, if I can, I don't have the whole.
Oh, okay.
It does depict the old structure and new structure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Justin, are you there?
Justin?
I think he fell asleep.
Justin?
He left the country.
So, can I ask you? What was the dimensions of the bedroom that you lost versus the dimensions of the bedroom that you're now creating?
Okay, the bedroom that I lost was probably about eight by ten feet, and the new bedroom, the dimensions are up there, I don't know if you can see them from here.
No. That's the new bedroom, right?
That's the new bedroom, right.
Okay, and there's the bathroom in the middle?
Yeah, the bathroom in the middle is a new bathroom, that was a bedroom prior to.
Okay.
Heather, what'd you say, those dimensions, or what?
Eight foot seven inches by ten foot two inches.
That's a new one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Basically, he's picking up seven inches on each.
Yeah, no big deal.
Yeah, yeah. Currently, it's what I call my backyard, it's empty. And all of my neighbors, my neighbor behind me has a shed, again, I'm not saying it's a legal shed, it was just put up, it's going to be about three to five feet away from that new bedroom.
So, is the shed metal or wood?
I believe it's wood.
Okay, because you know there's got to be fire separation.
Yeah, I know, we're trying to, I'm actually removing an existing shed on my property to create more fire separation.
Okay.
Currently, there's only about eighteen inches separation from the back of my house to my neighbor, so I'm actually losing a shed outside to try and increase that separation.
So you're going to put a party planking or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
To have a better fire rating?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't have many options. You don't have many options with that place.
No, I have really no other option. I mean, the only other option was to go up, except that, as I said, my wife is somewhat handicapped, that would need stairs, and that doesn't work for us.
How does the neighbor behind you feel?
That is a new owner, so I've never actually discussed it with them. I did send out all my notices, I don't know if they replied, but all of my other neighbors, you know, and I've known some of these people for thirty, forty years, are fine with this. I mean, I've been talking about this with my neighbors for the last two years, and they're all fine with it.
I can confirm, I received all of the certified mailing receipts, there are some green cards that came back, I didn't receive any correspondence on this particular.
What's the unit number behind you?
Um.
You recall?
I'm going to say B twelve, but I'm not positive.
Well, I would assume that you sent letters, I'm hoping you did.
Yeah, I got the list of addresses from you.
We don't want any surprises.
Yes, and Ben Carlin, who is actually the owner of all these lots, has already said he proved this, yeah.
He's given a written approval, I saw it.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Anyone else that wants to talk on this variance? Board, let's go.
If you could please come up to the microphone if you're going to address the board.
Hi, everybody, I'm Robert Nelson.
Excuse me, are you attorney?
No, I'm not an attorney.
He's just a tax.
Riverhead, tax pack.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Robert Nelson, one hundred and twenty Fishville Avenue, Riverhead, New York. I was just wondering, what was his original square footage of his bedroom and his bathrooms?
It was eight by ten.
Original, and the bathroom? The half bathroom?
Oh, the half bathroom, it's probably the smallest bathroom you ever saw, it was about three by three, maybe ten square feet.
So now your full bathroom is approximately like seven by seven or something?
Five by five by eight, I think.
Five by eight? All right, thank you so much.
You have no objection?
No, I have no objection. All right, thank you.
We got no dog in this fight.
No, no, no.
I didn't think so.
All right, who has this?
I'll take it. All right, Mr. Chairman, respectfully regarding the appeal number two zero two five eight oh three four, I move the appeal of Wood Cliff Park Cottage as LLC, Solikowski Residence, fifteen Surfway North, Bating Hollow, SCTM number six hundred dash four point two dash one dash four two, residents A dash four, uh, four zero, R eight dash four zero zoning for variances and or relief from town code chapter three zero one, there's eleven, where proposed front yard setback is nine point six feet, minimum required is fifty feet, where proposed side yard setback is two point eight feet, minimum required is twenty-five feet, where proposed combined side yard setback is eleven point two feet, and the minimum required is fifty-five feet, and where the proposed rear yard setback is eleven, is one point four feet, and the minimum required is six oh, six zero feet, and finally, where proposed impervious surface coverage is forty-six point five percent, maximum allowed is fifteen percent. Be approved in a court with the application and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. Okay, move then second, and Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mrs. Sweski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your variance has been granted, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have appeal number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero three six, Mohammed Faisal, two zero four one Osborne Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred dash sixty-two dash one dash fifteen, agricultural protection zone, proposed six-foot fence and eight-foot gate in front yard. Applicant requests variances and or relief from town code chapter three zero one dash three seven A two, where proposed fence height is six feet in the front yard, and the proposed driveway gate height is eight feet, maximum allowed height is four feet in a front yard. And I think we have the applicant's representatives on Zoom.
Good evening, Board, Robert Litt, here from the Litt Law Group, good evening.
Excuse me, are you a lawyer?
Yes, yes. Yes, I am an attorney.
Would you state your name and address again, please?
Absolutely, my name is Robert Litt, Litt Law Group, sixty-six North Village Avenue, Rockville Center, New York.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, as I said earlier, my name is Robert Litt, I am the managing member of the Litt Law Group, counsel for Mohammed Faisal, one of the owners of two thousand and forty-one Osborne Avenue in Riverhead, and the applicant in this instant application. My client has submitted an application seeking an area variance to construct a front yard fence, six feet in height, and a driveway gate, eight feet in height, where four feet is permitted pursuant to section three oh one dash thirty-seven A two of the zoning ordinance. The fence will be a see-through aluminum substantially similar to the picture submitted to the board marked sample, I believe that was submitted earlier today.
Yes, that was submitted via email, I showed it to everyone.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want the board to beware that my client did everything he could to open lines of communication with his neighbors, to ensure his neighbors, particularly the adjacent resident property, residential property owner, was comfortable with this application. The adjacent residential property owner is not only comfortable with this proposed fence, but also wrote a letter in support of the instant application, which has also been submitted to the board. I believe you have that as well, correct?
Yes, that was circulated via email.
Thank you. As can be seen in the aerial photograph submitted for your consideration, the other neighboring properties are non-residential and mainly comprise of agricultural properties and farms, as well as the waste management site and plumbing and heating facility. None of these properties seem to have any objection to the proposed fence, as same will have absolutely no impact on the functioning of their properties and business operating therein. I believe you also have that aerial map, correct?
That was also circulated via email earlier.
Yes, we saw it. Thank you. Also, submitted for the board's review is an aerial photo showing the approximate location of the fence and gate. They are sufficiently distant from any driveway and structures on the neighboring properties, so as not to have any impact on any neighbor's use of their property. It would also be positioned such, as such, that they will not obstruct any view and interfere with any traffic on Osborne Avenue. I believe you have that as well, correct?
That was the one.
Yes, I believe you have that one as well, just want to make certain you have it where, actually, my, one of my people in my office was very nice and did a little tech work and showed where the six-foot fence would be and where the gate would be, correct?
That's the mock-up in the picture.
Yes.
Thank you. The purpose fence and gate are completely in line with the neighborhood and its characteristics. Multiple properties in the neighborhood have similar features, and there will be no negative impact should the applicant construct his own similarly situated fence and gate. Furthermore, the instant application satisfies the requirements of an area variance. The benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. The applicant and his brother own the property together, use that as a secondary home, which they visit with their respective families throughout the year. The six-foot fence will provide safety and security for the families, which includes small children and elderly members. The proposed fence will fit perfectly well with the neighborhood's overall aesthetic. In fact, there is a plethora of properties in the neighborhood which contain similar fences, therefore granting the requested variance will have absolutely no negative impact on the surrounding property values. Based on the foregoing, I respectfully request on behalf of my client that the area variance request be approved. My client, Mohammed Faisal, is on the line as well, and he's here today with us to answer any particular questions the board may have for him as well. Thank you, and I'm here to answer questions, too.
The fence does not go around the entire property, is that correct?
No, it's only going around the front, but there is fences, I believe, that continue around the property.
There is what?
I believe there are fences around the property itself, but they are in compliance. This is the only one that's going to be higher, is the six-foot one on the front and the gate itself, eight feet.
But what is the purpose of the fence?
We understand the purpose of the fence is essentially, number one, for safety, in such that he has small children and he has elderly, and we really want to make certain that the property is secure and safe, that's the only reason for the fence.
So, there's small children, but that doesn't stop them from going to the corner of property and crossing out into the street? I'm just trying to make sense.
Well, there are fences, there are fences that run around the side of the property and the rear of the property, and Mr. Faisal could identify them further, but what I understand, they are surrounding the entire property, so the property will be completely secure.
So, the survey does not depict a fence along the northern part, well, it shows a wooden fence, I guess.
Yes, yes, there is a wooden fence.
How high is that fence?
From what my understanding, it's in compliance, it's no more than four feet tall.
Okay, so, and it looks like it goes in about fifty feet, and then there's a hedge row, so does that mean that the kids can get around that and get out to the street? That's all I'm concerned about, is the kids getting in the street.
From what I understand, the property will be fully secure once the six-foot fence up front along with the eight-foot gate will be installed, upon approval.
So, if you have a wood foot, four-foot wood fence on the north side of the property, why does the one on the street have to be six-foot? Why can't that be four-foot? Because that's what the code requires, four-foot.
Because the street, because the street, and is our position that we wanted to have a high enough fence for the street area, everything else, number one, in the back, most people, again, for safety and security, not about the kids getting out, but other people getting in, from what I understand, based on Mr. Faisal mentioning us, there were some kids that were coming in and stuff like that, we wanted to really keep the property secure, and that's why we wanted to have that, and other some.
I understand that you want to keep the property secure, but down on the southerly portion of the property, you could just walk right in, so I don't know how that's keeping it secure.
From what I understand, there's a period of woods, Mr. Faisal, could you please comment on what are the fences that are currently around the rest of the property, please try to answer the question of the board member, please?
He just has to be sworn in.
He has to be sworn first.
Please raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, please state your name and address.
Yes, whole truth, hi, everyone, my name is Mohammed Faisal, and I'm on discussing about two thousand and forty-one Osborne Avenue, so I would like to correct one thing, like, you're talking about the fencing on the side and the back of the property, right? The wooden one?
On the south side of the property.
Yes.
There is no fence.
Yeah, the existing fence, right?
No.
There's a wire.
It doesn't show a fence on the south side of the property on the survey.
Okay, is it on my property you're talking about?
Yes, I have the survey in front of me, I do not see a fence that is depicted, however, I see woods, I see that there's a wooded area, maybe that's what you're thinking about.
There's a fence right here, and here, is that from outside?
No, I will, yeah, there is a fence, there is a fence on the back of the property.
Right here, this is the south side.
Another fence right here.
This is Osborne.
No, it's which way, both of you, wait, is it south side?
You got it upside down. So.
His fence is right here.
No. It says foundation, concrete, foundation, concrete.
Okay, good.
So.
They're all foundations, why I wonder what that is.
Do you feel secure with the woods there? Are you feeling secure with the woods?
No, I'm not secure with the wood, there is a, there is a fence, fence back there.
Well, it's not depicted.
I think Mr. Faisal is comfortable with the fact the woods are on the side, there's enough of a distance, since the Town of Hempstead owns that property, to the south, that there's enough of a buffer zone and such that.
But he's attesting, he's attesting that there's no fence, or there is a fence, which one is it?
Which one is it, is there a fence or isn't there?
Which side of the property, the, toward the, like, Young Avenue you're talking about?
Yes, yes, towards Young Avenue, Young's Avenue.
Okay, next, so like, next my neighbor, right, the right side of my neighbor you're talking about? I believe, right?
Depends on which way you're facing.
Yes, on the Young's Avenue, Mohammed. Yes, yes, that one has a fencing, the property, yeah, I would like to, I think, yeah, that one has a fencing on the property, which is compliance, you know, the wood, and the wires.
From what I understand, there's a wood fence that runs along the southern part of the property by the woods, correct?
By the wood.
Counsel, you stated earlier that there were properties similarly situated, can you, do you have a list of residential properties, non-agricultural properties, residential properties, that have six-foot fences in the front yard and or eight-foot gates?
Yes, we think the Foxwood Village had a six-foot fence, was located fourteen oh seven Middle Road, which is about half mile away.
Yeah, that's a commercial property, and it was treated as a commercial property through site plan application, so it's not a residential property, even though they're modular units.
There aren't too many residential properties there, because most of them are farms and businesses and such, this is the closest one we had to it, since that was residential use, we considered that one would be at least close up.
But it's treated as a commercial use, and it goes through a process called site plan review, and that's why the town required that fence around that property. So, do you have any residential properties that have six-foot fences in the front with eight-foot gates?
Not that we could locate any ones over there with a six-foot fence and eight-foot gates, only the fact is that there were similar types of gates there, other types of properties and similar in that fashion, but if not, I don't have any ones that particular the residential fences that I was able to locate, because there wasn't too many residential properties happening there.
Yeah, so the fencing that you're referring to, those were agricultural properties?
Yes, yes.
They changed direction. Well, I certainly would like to see some additional properties that have six-foot fence with eight-foot gates that are residential.
Well, counsel stated he did a search and could not locate that.
Okay, so.
Well, I could do a further search if necessary, see, I could not find them immediately from an initial search.
I see.
But that's obviously, you know, something which we have to go a little deeper in how further out we need to go to go locate from the property, I was trying to find within the general vicinity, but again.
So, a four-foot fence would not help you?
No, my client indicated that he wanted something a little bit higher than four feet.
Is it going to be a solid fence?
No, it's going to be a see-through fence.
A see-through fence?
Yes, like the one that I was submitting.
So he's seeking privacy, but you can see through it?
Yes, yes, exactly, has security and such, but more than anything else, it does give a sense of ability to keep people out and keep people in.
But counsel, isn't the fact that the absence of a fence on that other side, inconsistency would is concern for security?
Oh, I think what's more important is that. Um, I think what's more important is that, if you take a look at the survey, um, the other parts of the properties don't have the access to the main road. That's really what we were more concerned about, is that to the south, you had, you had the town, the town of Riverhead's property, which was essentially, uh, forests and woods. To the north, we did have the necessary fences, and to the other sides, which was also the town of Riverhead, and, and to the back, which was also a commercial property, people didn't have the same access as, as to the front of the property. That's what we focused on, the front of the property, which was right on Osborne Avenue, and that's where we really wanted to maintain the majority of the security.
So, do you have any copies of any police reports wherein you reported incidents of trespassing?
Oh, Mohammed, did you have any incidents yourself, please? Put your...
So, it's like, uh, uh, like, I, I didn't have the copy for the, the incident or the report, what happened, but a couple of times I called the police, right? And complained, because there was some trespassing and people go all the, the way in the back of the property.
But you made reports.
Yeah, but I didn't have the, any, just we called, we called the police. But we didn't have anything inviting, anything written, you know?
But, but you just stated, unless I heard you incorrectly, you stated coming from the back of the property. You stated, you described it as you had people coming from the back of your property, not the front of your property. That's what you said, unless I heard it incorrectly.
The front to the back.
They enter the property from the front and go to the back.
Yes, they came through the front to the back, exactly. It's large enough of a property where essentially they were coming through the front area. We were hoping that the fact that this, the, the six-foot fence with the eight-foot gate would keep them from coming through the front and make it much harder for them to get access down the pass. Coming from the rear on the side is, is very difficult, from the front is very easy.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Lit, is it Mr. Lit?
Yes.
Uh, looking at this property, this is a huge piece of property. Why wouldn't you put a fence that would secure your house and the property around your house? Why are you securing a huge piece of property? Why wouldn't you, if you wanted security, why wouldn't you have the gate and have fencing run down and give yourself enough land for your house and driveway and everything, and you'd have a secure piece of property?
I think more than anything else, they were focusing on the front first, and the fact that the other parts of it, since it's eight acres and it's pretty substantial, to at least deal with the front first, and then use the natural boundaries themselves in order to keep the safety aspects around the rest of the property. If they found that there was going to be a problem, then they would really just need to just get the necessary permits and keep a four-foot fence around the rest of the property at a later time. But they wanted to at least start with the process of the six-foot fence plus the eight-foot gate in the front first, to do this process here. And there is fencing along the rear, and there's fencing along some of the other parts of it. So, it's, it's a little bit piecemeal as he's sort of working through this process.
Well, I think you, as an attorney, you can see our concern, uh, because we don't particularly care for six-foot fences in a front yard in residential properties. That's why we have it in the zoning code that is prohibited, and that four-foot is acceptable, but six-foot is not acceptable. So, if you know of any other properties that you can provide us that had sought relief or had put it up without objections, um, I, I would have a tendency to say okay. But right now, I think we're looking for some, some, uh, other properties that have that kind of, and I don't know of any myself. So, it would be helpful if you could provide that, counselor.
Yeah, that would be, that's fine, um, we're gonna go a little bit deep, dig, dig a little bit deeper to see if we can find something that do fall within the compliance.
I would suggest that.
Mr. Lit, if you could also secure any prior police reports regarding trespasses.
Yeah, that would be good, too.
Absolutely, we've got police reports, and we're gonna try to find other properties that have similar six-foot fences.
Well, that's good. Okay, gentlemen.
So, do you want to adjourn to the next meeting?
Yes.
December eleventh?
That's correct.
Yes, thank you.
That should be fine, December eleventh, again, as long as it'll be virtual, that should not be a problem.
And you'll bring that back to us, and you'll send that to our assistant? Via email?
Absolutely.
Thank you, counselor.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for the board's time and, uh, and comments.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, we're gonna adjourn this to December eleventh, so I'm gonna make the motion.
I'd like a motion to adjourn it to December eleventh.
Second.
Second, move in a second, and Mr. Porta.
Thank you again.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Gazillo.
Gazillo, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I vote aye. So, that's been adjourned to December eleventh. Heather?
Thank you, but watch.
Good, thank you very much.
Okay, um... Next appeal is appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero three-seven, Glenn and Virginia Woodhull, five oh six Sound Shore Road, Jamesport, Suffolk County, tax map number six hundred dash seven dash one dash twenty-one. Residence A forty zoning to legalize two sheds. Applicant requests variances and or relief from town code chapter three zero one dash nine A one A, where an existing shed is located in a front yard, not permitted, and three zero one dash nine A one B, where a shed located in a side yard is two point six feet from side property line. Minimum required is twenty feet.
Welcome, Ms. Judge.
Good evening, Kimberly Judge, seven thirty-seven Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead. Glenn and Virginia Woodhull are the owners. They're not here tonight, but their daughter Christine Malasian is, is here. She's sitting up front.
I think they might be on Zoom.
Who are these people?
Uh, Glenn and Virginia Woodhull are the...
And who's this?
And this is their daughter, uh, Christine.
Christine, she's on the phone right now.
Did I say the wrong name? Oh, okay.
No, I'm just having a little fun.
Okay.
I know.
So, this property is located on Sound Shore Road in Riverhead. It borders the Long Island Sound to the north. The property is three point two acres. It's located in the RA forty zoning district, so it's an oversized property. It, it benefits from a certificate of occupancy for a mobile home and deck. This property has been in the Woodhull family for over thirty years. Glenn and Virginia, the current owners, uh, received the property from a trust from their, from Glenn's parents. And I think they obtained the property probably in the early two thousands. So, there, there are two sheds on the property, and that's what we're here before you. I, I have watched your other meetings. I know how you feel about sheds. If you can locate them in a conforming location, you would rather they be relocated than grant a variance. So, I'm gonna show you, I don't know if you were able to go to the property today. There's no place else to put these two sheds that doesn't require variance.
Yeah, we were actually...
Oh, you were there? Okay. So, I put some pictures in there, you'll, and I think the survey is worth a thousand words. I, I know that at the road, you can see on the survey, the contours, the elevation at the road, it's Sound Shore Road, the seventy-six feet. And as you progress towards the rear of the property, it goes down substantially. There is no place to put these sheds in the rear yard, because as the pictures showed, they're right behind their deck, there's a staircase, and it's thirty feet down. And the property is naturally vegetated heavily. There's only enough room, as you can see on the survey, for, uh, a, a narrow walking path. So, it doesn't make sense to put it in the rear yard, because right behind their deck, behind the house, is a thirty-foot drop. And the pictures in the packet will show you that, that, uh, there's a picture of my client, actually Christine, walking down the stairs. I don't know if you can take a look at that, the pictures, I think. You can see from the aerial, I put this aerial in the package, it's Suffolk County G I S photo. It shows the, my client's property has a blue circle on it, and you can see the two sheds on there. It's dated two thousand and one, so you can see that they're there. The aerial photo before that's nineteen eighty-four, it's too early, so it, it doesn't show it on there. But my clients estimate that the sheds were put in their current locations around the nineteen nineties by Mr. and Mrs. Woodhull's parents.
Yeah, we saw a satellite with footings, but what date was that one?
Two thousand eighteen.
So...
These, uh, the, for the sheds? These are the next page or...
We saw a satellite picture, right? Two thousand eighteen?
Two thousand eighteen.
That, that showed just footings. So, was that shed put in...
No, both of these sheds were put in the nineteen nineties.
And then put back?
Wait, you wanna, you wanna ask? This is Christine Malasian, if you want to swear in.
Yes, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, to hold truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Christine Malasian, I live at five oh six Sound Shore Road, Riverhead, New York.
Thank you.
So, the, um, more put-together shed was at one time an aluminum shed that had received heavy damage during a storm. So, it was replaced in the same area.
Footprint.
Footprint, thank you.
I see.
Yes, so maybe it was replaced.
So, it was replaced after or during eighteen, two thousand eighteen?
I think after.
After, okay. So, now we have two that we're looking at, and, uh, let me ask this, you, you have a subdivision going on with this?
Yes.
So...
We're trying to subdivide so I can build a house on the other part of the property, for me.
Oh, baby. Okay, so, um, are those sheds, like, mounted in cement, uh, how do you have them anchored?
Um, I bel, I, they're not in cement.
I mean, is it possible that they could be moved after you do the subdivision? Or you just want to keep them in place until you get your house built and all that kind of stuff?
Well, we're gonna build on the other side.
What's the other side?
So, the, yeah, the east side of the property.
Right, I see that.
It's all vegetation now. So, we're splitting the property down the middle, basically.
Kind of down the middle. And, and would you be willing to take one of those sheds and bring it over?
They, they could do that, but they split the variance.
I, I understand. I, I just want to know if they're willing to do it. We're not gonna make you, make you do it, but we're thinking about making you do it. We, you, you want a house, you know?
The one was built by my great-grandfather.
Okay, so it has good sediment.
And it was built as a porch that was, um...
Yeah, and that, that has no habitable space in there, right? Because it looks like a little cottage, maybe in the twenties, people lived in there, I don't know.
It was built as a porch to give the, the sufficient living space to the trailer that was once on the site.
Oh, I got you, okay.
In the seventies, when my grand, when my dad was a young kid. And so, when the current modular home was put in in ninety, instead of tearing it down, they just moved it and dropped the other part of the roof to make it a tool shed for my grandfather.
So, one's a tool shed and one's a junk shed?
Correct.
Kinda.
Toys.
Toys? You need a big shed like that?
Yeah.
You know, because they're not, it's bigger than a hundred and twenty square feet, so that's a problem. You're gonna have to get rid of one of those trikes. No, I'm just kidding, um...
Stop kidding.
Well... Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
How do I get in the middle of this?
If I could show you something real quick, um, on the survey here. If you draw a line from the front of the house, from lot line to lot line and to the back, in the red that I crossed out, that's, that's your side yard. So, you can't, you need a variance to put your shed there in the side yard. And if I go in front of the house anywhere, I need a variance to put the shed in a, in a front yard. So, I submit that the property owner who would be most negatively impacted, uh, to the west over here, De River, has already verbally told my client they have no objection to the sheds remaining there. And I would just say, uh, as a sort of an aside, the town of Southampton, on waterfront properties, they flip the front and rear yards. That way, you can put your accessory structures on the roadside. I, I, I know that's something...
And that makes sense.
So, I think, it makes sense only because you just can't put it in the rear yard because of how above a drop it is when you're walking over to the beach, and anyplace else you're gonna need it for a side or, or front yard.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to talk on this variance?
Christine, want to testify? No, Christine, does she want to? I'm sorry, Julie, no?
We have any problems down here?
No.
Does anyone on Zoom want to speak on this matter?
Doesn't look like Heather, who's got it?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Who is it?
This is Glenn Woodhull.
Your neighbor to the west.
That's my dad.
This is, I receive this, um, property...
Wait a minute. We gotta swear him in, and where is he?
Okay, I'm in Salisbury, Maryland.
Justin.
What can I do for you? How can I do?
Hold on, please. Just, just stop, stop, stop. Down below.
Are you on cell phone or on video?
Video.
Zoom. Down below, are you, you got one of those black squares, the first one over there?
I was on here in a minute, but I don't know why it's not now.
Yeah, we can hear you. If you could just find a way to turn your webcam on, so we could see you.
Okay. That's the challenge.
Mr. Woodhull, can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you.
All right. Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear to tell the truth, to hold truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Please state your name and address.
I solemnly swear, yes, I do. My name is Glenn Richard Woodhull. My address is five oh, there's a...
Fourteen oh six.
Fourteen oh six Camden Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland.
Good, go ahead.
Okay, um, Christine was accurate in saying that my parents bought the property in nineteen sixty-three, and they had a trailer on there that did not meet code. So, my grandf, my grandfather was a carpenter, and he built a por, a porch, sunroom, to comply with what needed to happen for it to be legal. The trailer, um, held up for so much time that it ended up being unusable to use. So, they had to take the trailer down, and they moved that porch over aside. And when they put the other, um, prefab on there in nineteen ninety, my father moved the, the, uh, shed over to the far west corner for a shop. Um, he had lots and lots of tools. My, my grandfather had a lot of tools, and we used that shed for many, many years to hold tools and such, uh, such like that. We also had another shed that was a, a aluminum shed that, um, like Christine said, there was a storm and it got damaged. So, we had, uh, hired somebody to come in and build another shed there to take care of lawn mower and other things, um...
Summer furniture.
Summer furniture, things that needed to be kept that couldn't go into the other shed.
It can't be seen from the road.
Then, and obviously, it can't be seen from the road, nobody can see it. Um, our neighbor to the west has no prob, no problem with that. We've talked about it years ago, um, and recently as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else out here? Who is this?
I'll read it, Mr. Chairman. Um, I move the appeal of twenty twenty-five thirty-seven for Glenn and Virginia Woodhull, five oh six Sound Shore Road, Jamesport, tax map number is six hundred dash seven dash one dash twenty-one. Located in the residence A forty district, RA forty zoning, for variances and or relief of the town code, chapter three oh one dash nine A one A, where an existing shed is located in the front yard, not permitted, and three oh one dash nine A one B, where a shed located on the side yard is two point six feet from the side property line. Minimum required is twenty square feet. Be approved in accordance with the application sketches with amendments thereto, if any, filed by the building inspector.
A second?
Do I have a second, please?
Second. All right, second, move in a second, and Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mr. Weskey.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Gazillo.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so variance has been granted, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, Mr. Woodhull.
Okay. Next, we have appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero three-eight, RH Hamptons, three two one LLC, three fourteen Maple Avenue and three twenty-one Union Avenue, Riverhead. Suffolk County tax map numbers, six hundred dash one twenty-seven dash one dash forty-four and one twenty-seven dash one dash forty-one. Residence A forty zoning for an un-merger. Applicant requests variances and or relief from town code, chapter three zero one dash two forty-three C three, where un-mergers shall result in lot areas, half or less of the area permitted in the RA forty zoning use district, which is twenty thousand square feet. More specifically, three fourteen Maple Avenue area is five thousand two square feet, and three twenty-one Union Avenue area is five thousand one hundred thirty-nine point six nine square feet. Chapter three zero one dash eleven, where front yard setback for three fourteen Maple Avenue is twenty-five point eight feet. Minimum required is twenty... Chapter three zero one dash eleven, where front yard setback for three fourteen Maple Avenue is twenty-five point eight feet, minimum required is fifty feet, where impervious surface coverage for three fourteen Maple Avenue is twenty-seven point two percent, maximum permitted is fifteen percent. Where proposed front yard setback for three twenty-one Union Avenue is twenty-five point one feet, minimum required is fifty feet. And where proposed impervious surface coverage for three twenty-one Union Avenue is twenty-nine point twenty-four percent, maximum permitted is fifteen percent.
Good evening, Mr. Cuddy.
Evening. Charles Cuddy for the applicant. I have an office at four four five Gripping Avenue, Riverhead, New York. I hope that Heather wasn't exhausted by reading that, but could you give copies of this to the board? There's one for you and one for you. I just have a small packet that I'm handing out, just I think to go over this because this is somewhat of a unique variance from my perspective because it involves two lots, which is probably rare. I've handed out a packet because I just thought it would help familiarize you with the property. The the top sheet is just to show you that there are the two lots. The principal lot we're talking about is on Union Avenue, which is called three twenty-one Union Avenue and it's known as tax lot forty-one. The second lot, which we'll get to in in a moment, is the lot that's on Maple Avenue, known as three fourteen Maple Avenue, and it's known as tax lot forty-four. The second item I gave you is really two tax bills. These are current tax bills. This lot has had, these two lots have had tax bills for many, many years. In fact, the next statement that's in your group there is the history of the tax lots, just to let you know when they originated. One of them in nineteen twenty, um the other in nineteen fifty-five. So these lots have been around for a long, long time as separate lots. The town recognized by giving out tax bills that they were separate. There came a time when they were looked at as a single lot, but before I get to that, I just want you to look at the photo that's in the next, the fourth thing that's in the package. That photo shows these two lots vacant in twenty twenty-three, but it shows that by nineteen, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. The second photo shows that there's a house on the Maple Avenue lot. And the last thing I gave you was a certificate of occupancy to show you that there, the town recognized in January of twenty twenty-five this separate lot, the one on Maple Avenue, um as distinct from the one on Union Avenue. So all along, these lots had been treated separately by the town. And in fact, the building was put up in in twenty twenty-four and there's a CO for it in twenty twenty-five. So I think without too much question, the lots are separate. They're not merged lots. There was a question that was raised at one time by the building inspector, did they merge? Well, when you build a house on one lot, you've confirmed that that lot is a separate, single lot, and that's what was done. So I don't think there's really a serious question that these are two separate lots. The problem is in building on these lots, even with the one that has a CO, the area that they're in is an R forty area. There's no house in that whole block that's a one-acre lot. All of the lots, and you can see some by the pictures, that all those lots are roughly five, six thousand square feet. So it's impossible to build on these lots without having some sort of variance. For the one on Maple Avenue, no variance was requested, no variance was required. They just gave a building permit. The house was built, there's a CO for the house, but we're asking tonight that the CO be amended to reflect the impervious surface and the setback variance that's requested and the relief. The same thing goes for the house that would be on Union Avenue because that's a five thousand square foot lot in an R forty area. So you can't build anything virtually without having some variance and without having impervious surface variance. Both the houses would be similar in size, approximately two thousand square feet. The one house on is already constructed, of course, and the other house is to be constructed. But so our our relief request is to grant the variance requested to acknowledge that this is a separate lot. The acknowledgement being for the lot that's on Union Avenue, three twenty-one Union Avenue. I don't have more to say. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good. Any questions here? Anyone in the audience that would want to speak on this variance? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on the board? All right, who's got this? Got the reading.
That me?
Daniel, take it. So, Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number twenty twenty-five zero three eight, I move that the appeal of RH Hampton's three twenty-one LLC were three fourteen Maple Avenue and three twenty-one Union Avenue, Riverhead. Suffolk County tax map number is six hundred dash one two seven dash one dash four four and six hundred dash one two seven dash one dash four one, which is in residence A forty zoning for variances and or relief from the town code, chapter three oh one dash two four three C, where unmerger shall result in lot areas, one half or less of the area permitted in the RA forty zoning use district, twenty thousand square foot, more specifically. Three fourteen Maple Avenue area is five thousand two square foot and three twenty-one Union Avenue area is five thousand one hundred and thirty-nine point six nine square foot. Chapter three oh one dash eleven, where front yard setback for three fourteen Maple is twenty-five point eight foot, the minimum required is fifty foot. Where impervious surface coverage for three fourteen Maple is twenty-seven point two percent and the maximum permitted is fifteen percent. Where proposed front yard setbacks for three twenty-one Union Avenue is twenty-five point one foot, minimum required is fifty foot, and where proposed impervious surface coverage for three twenty-one Union Avenue is twenty-one point two four percent, twenty-nine point two four percent, and maximum permitted is fifteen percent. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with the amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
I have a second somewhere?
I'll second.
All right, moving in second, and Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mr. Zaweski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Gazillo.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your variance has been granted?
Thank you. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a good night, Mr. Cuddy.
Last appeal of the night. Twenty twenty-five dash zero three nine Suzanne Bax, uh Seven Warner Court, Calverton. Suffolk County tax map number six hundred dash eleven dash two dash two. Residence A eighty zoning, proposed single-family dwelling, pool and detached garage. Applicant requests variances and or relief from town code, chapter three zero one dash twenty-one A one A, where proposed pool is located in front yard, not permitted, where proposed detached garage is located in front yard, not permitted. Chapter three zero one dash two one A one B, where proposed pool side yard setback is six point two feet, minimum required is twenty-five feet, and chapter three oh one dash two twenty C, where proposed habitable space for overnight accommodations in lower level of garage, not permitted.
Your attorney, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Brian Doyle. I'm an attorney with the law firm Greenberg Trogg, two three one seven Montalk Highway in Bridgehampton. Uh, I represent Suzanne and Ken Baxte, and I'm here tonight with Shope Reno Wharton, who is their design team, who is here on Zoom. To the extent the board would like, the design team can walk you through the presentation and I can assist.
Turn that mic up a little bit.
And I can assist you with any questions. You got it.
Okay, go right ahead.
Evening. Can everybody hear us?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Edward Napparkowski. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Shope Reno Wharton, we're the architectural team playing with this project. Uh, I'm also here in the room with two colleagues of mine, Jerry Hoopie and David Butcher, partners of the firm who are familiar with the project.
Excuse me, I have to swear all of you in, I guess. Is anybody alive or uptown Zoom?
Nope.
All right, who's speaking?
Ed? David Butcher.
All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help you God, please state your name and address individually, please.
Jerry Hoopie. Eighteen Marshall Street, South Norwalk, Connecticut.
Thank you.
David Butcher, eighteen Marshall Street, South Norwalk, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Edward Napparkowski, eighteen Marshall Street, South Norwalk, Connecticut.
Thank you. About the last, rest two.
That's the backs.
Okay, okay, go right ahead. Thank you.
May we, uh, share our screen with you for a few moments?
Go ahead.
Uh, if I may, I'd like to take a few minutes at the top of the conversation here and just walk you through uh bits and pieces of the project and explain how we got to the proposed design that you see before you. So what we have here, uh, if you can all see our screen appropriately, is a site plan. And what we're showing is the two parcels at lot number six and lot number seven on Warner Court in Bating Hollow. Uh, the reason we're showing these two parcels in conjunction with one another is that they are both held in common ownership by our clients. Uh, but we're here really to focus on lot number seven, which is the parcel on the right side of the page in the triangular area. The way you approach the site is via Warner Court and the driveway into the property is in the cul-de-sac. You enter in the narrowest point of the property at the highest topographic elevation, which is depicted in the whitest shade of green here. As you enter the property with the driveway, you descend downhill following the topography. There is a currently an existing detached two-story garage on your left. And as you approach the garage, you subjectively notice quite dramatically that the grade drops off very steeply to your right, which ends up in the darkest green area over to the right side of the screen and a pretty, pretty deep gully. Uh, but as you exit your car at the garage, if you were to approach the existing main residence, you would walk on foot across an exposed walkway toward the front door of the main residence, uh, further reinforcing how the the grade subjectively falls away on either side of you before you enter into the main block of the residence, which is depicted in the middle of the screen and the dark red block. So we spent a lot of time on this site, uh, walking around on foot, kind of exploring all the different angles of where we could locate uh new residents as per the requirements that our clients uh helped us do. And we pretty quickly came to the conclusion that the current location of the existing residence was, in fact, the best building location here. So once we decided that we would propose a new residence on the footprint of the existing structure, we started to kind of come up with ways of how we could approach the site, the vehicle, where we could park. Uh, we looked at a couple of different solutions that kind of entered onto uh garages underneath the main block, either on the right side or on the front-facing garage. Both of these would require pretty significant changes to the topography that would require a pretty significant clearing of trees. Uh, these are not things that we really wanted to do. Uh, we want to have a much more sensitive approach to the site as much as we can. Uh, this is a pretty ecologically sensitive site with regard to the coastal erosion hazard uh proximity to the coast, so we we want to keep things as light and sensitive as possible. So in that, we concluded that we would locate a two-car detached garage in like-kind to the uh to location approximately where the existing one is, which is again in the front yard of the existing main residence. Uh, and doing our proposed location, we relocated this out of the existing setback where the current garage building uh currently sits. Uh, and as the two of those relate to one another, the garage and the house, we have the final programmatic element of the swimming pool that we had to find a location for, and we also came to a conclusion that similar to where the existing one is located, that the most sensitive and logical area was to locate the proposed pool in a location very similar to the existing. Uh, however, we are also giving ourselves some relief by pulling it further back from the property line to where it currently is. So with that in mind, uh, I'd also like to share a few photographs with you, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
This is the, this is the existing driveway approach. So this is, you know, depicting coming downhill to the left, there's the existing two-story detached garage in the front of the main residence. And this really highlights, you know, the pretty steep drop-off on both sides as you approach this, uh, both to the the gully in the right, which is a big heavily wooded pit, and to the left, which ultimately leads in a more open manner to the coast. As you leave the garage and approach the main residence, this is that exposed walkway leading to the front door, uh, just again further highlighting how the the grade kind of reacts to this and how the the existing main residence is situated upon a perch. This is a shot of the rear of the residence looking in the opposite direction, uh, again, showing a different view, particularly with the depressed area to the left and the heavily wooded area. This takes us into a view of the proposed. Um, so this would be the mitigated approach. And this also shows the detached two-car garage. Um, but again, whereas the existing one is, you know, kind of rotated at an angle and set over the side uh the setback. This one is, you know, speaking more relation within the house. Uh, it's in a bit more sensitive area, but it still maintains, you know, a similar approach in terms of the driveway and in terms of the footprint of the two buildings. Uh, and you can see as it rolls off into the the grade on the right side of the image. And a shot of the proposed residence from the back, uh, more or less from the uh of the depression on the east side of the property. With that, I will turn it over to the board for for the discussion and comments.
I will point out, one of the elements of relief that was part of the application was to call a portion of the garage habitable space on the ground floor. Uh, upon reflection, the applicant would just like to be able to have kind of a cabana area in that space. So we are not requesting relief to have that be overnight habitable space. We just want to be able to have a bathroom and a changing area in that space. So from my perspective, that was the most controversial of the application that was before you. The other elements of the application are effectively reducing nonconformities on the property.
So Heather, more than likely due to the way the uh house is situated on the property, this would require a application under uh the coastal erosion, chapter two nineteen, correct?
So any ground disturbance beyond that fifty-foot line, I mean, the deck is very close, they're proposing it at fifty-one point five feet. So the deck itself is out of jurisdiction, but any ground disturbance beyond that would require chapter two nineteen approval from the planning board, though it would not require a variance from chapter two nineteen.
Right. So in other words, in some of the plans that we looked at, there's a proposal for silt fencing, obviously, uh, to protect the coastal area. But in order to utilize those methods of silt fencing, the applicant would have to get a two nineteen permit to do that.
Okay.
Sorry, our laptop is low on battery. Sorry, was I supposed to answer an additional question? Having some technological issues. Am I good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor, I see that there's a patio that's encroaching over to the next lot. Is that gonna be removed?
Yes, yeah, and that lot is owned by the same couple that are your applicants, so that is being removed and everything.
They're in separate names?
Yes, and it's being moved back onto the lot, so that nonconformity is being removed.
Will there be any materials brought in to elevate the house, the new house?
I'll leave that to the architects to answer if there's material being brought.
Do you anticipate any soil import or export?
No, to the best, to the best of our knowledge, no. You know, the way we've situated things here, there's really no anticipation of either importation or exportation of film to or from the site.
Okay. And um I understand that there is a property owners association up there?
Correct, yes.
How are they feeling about this project? Have you had any input from anybody?
To date, we have not had any input. They have been notified as part of this procedural for the hearing, but we haven't had any specific input.
So the people that live in there know about it, and they're aware of what's going on?
Yes.
Correct.
This is, it was conspicuously posted, and everybody's.
It was posted in the.
The HO has been notified because they own the beach behind this piece of property, so they're notified.
Right, right. Okay. So I haven't heard anything, so we'll see if anybody else has anything to say. Camera. Right up, please, to the mic. You waited long, so please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you, God.
So help me, God.
Please state your name.
My name is Boadon, my name is Boadon Lozoryk. I live at 8 Warner Court, Bating Hall in New York. I am just, I am next-door neighbors. Ken and Suzanne. The only question I have.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, would you spell your last name, please?
And my first name is B-O-H-V-A-N.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No problem. The only question I have is, could the architect put up the picture of the front of the house Okay, now, if I am correct, that is coming, the driveway is going straight off the cul-de-sac into the detached garage, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So in other words, if I, so the way you're situated there, you're going to be removing trees on both sides of that driveway a little bit, aren't you not?
We're, so we're maintaining the same driveway approach, where the existing garage on the left has a much steeper turn into the left.
Yeah, I know that. I know the lot perfectly, it's next door to me.
Correct. You know, we understand. You know, we're maintaining the footprint in as much as possible.
Okay.
It's our intention to not level any trees.
Okay, fine. Now, could you show me the picture of, I guess, it would be the east side of the house?
Only what we have is a look from the back. Yeah.
So that's the east side?
Correct.
And you won't be, are you removing any trees in front of that?
So where this image is taken from is currently wooded.
Yeah, I know that. That's what I'm asking.
For purposes of presenting the design to the clients, we can't exactly be looking through the trees, so this is, you know.
Yeah, these, the renderings were created for presentation of the architecture, not, not necessarily in terms of preservation of the trees. Okay. Well, I don't have no problems you're going to be removing trees from that side. The only thing I had a quest, question was, the proposal on the garage, but they already say they're not going to have anybody staying over, over, so that, I have no problem. As far as I'm concerned, I wish them the best of luck on their new home when it's going to be built. And the only question I have is, if I have any cracks in my house, are you guys going to repair it? When you go pounding? I'm just a joke, relax. There's some humor here. Okay, thank you for your time. Ken and Sue, I hope you good luck on your new place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have it.
Wonderful.
Is there anyone on Zoom who wanted to add anything who hasn't been heard?
Everybody reported already.
Ready?
Let's go.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to Appeal Number 2025-039, I move that the appeal of Suzanne Bax, Seven Warner Court, Calverton, STM number 600-11-2-2, Residence A80, RA80 zoning, for variances and/or relief from Town Code, Chapter 301-21a1a, where proposed pool is located in front yard, not permitted; where proposed detached garage is located in front yard, not permitted; Chapter 301-21a1b, where proposed pool side yard setback is 6.2 feet, minimum required is 25 feet; and Chapter 301-20c, where proposed habitable space for overnight accommodations in lower level of garage, not permitted. This board makes the following findings of fact and grants the above-mentioned relief in part with conditions. Proposed pool and garage locations are approved. The accessory structure located within the front yard, to wit, detached two-car garage with basement partially finished for poolhouse with half bathroom, no shower, closet and guest area, and storage with second-floor studio, attached outdoor shower, shall be for seasonal use and not improved with (a) a positive heating supply to the structure or converted area, (b) energy conservation measures such as insulation to protect from heat loss, or (c) a potable year-round water supply which is protected from freezing or if water is supplied on a year-round basis. In addition to said structure, in addition, said structure shall not be further expanded nor shall structure be improved with kitchen facilities or laundry facilities, including but not limited to cooking appliances, range, stove, cooktop, microwave, refrigerator, cabinets, kitchen sink, washing machine, or dryer, except may be improved with a sink proposed and made part of this application and shall not be used for overnight sleeping accommodations, nor shall either be offered for use, be it gift, license, or lease, for overnight accommodations, recreational or special events, or operation of a business, and instead, same is limited to use as accessory to the single-family residence. In accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector, and the building inspector/planning department shall determine the appropriateness of a requirement for a Chapter 219 coastal erosion hazard permit for proposed disturbance within the coastal erosion hazard area.
Second.
Okay. Moving in second, Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mr. Zaweski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Gazillo.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your variances have been granted. Good luck.
Good night, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Judge.
Is it possible to still, is it possible to still ask a question?
Sure.
One of the conditions you mentioned talked about no shower, and if, effectively, if this is a pool cabana, I understand the point about no insulation, but is there, is there something that, that does not allow the bath in there to have a shower?
So I think the way the application was originally proposed was for an outdoor shower, is that correct, Heather?
It has an indoor, it has a full bath inside.
And an outdoor.
There is an outdoor shower as well, but there is a full bath inside shown in the drawings.
So typically, in order to ensure that the improvements are not used for overnight accommodations, typically it limits to the half bath for the cabana.
Okay, I, I didn't, I didn't see that within the code. Is it possible to ask for relief for that?
I have no objection to a shower. Okay. Yeah, I have no objection to a shower.
Okay, I'm fine. Leroy?
You'd have to amend the resolution.
Yeah, so amended.
Okay.
Does he have to read it off or?
Application for, to amend the resolution to permit a full bathroom, toilet, sink, and full shower indoor in addition to an outdoor shower.
Correct. Move. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Good night, Mr. Doyle.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good one. See.
And before everyone runs away, we do have minutes from October 23rd.
Somebody move it, please.
Move to be accepted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next meeting day is December 11th, 2025. There is no meeting on November 27th because it's Thanksgiving, unless everybody wants to come have Thanksgiving here.
You can come down and pack tourniquet.
Be thankful you're not a turkey.
Exactly.
Motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.